I'd like to welcome everybody to this 2019 First Meeting, January 14th. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your beloved liberty, justice, and one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Starcher.
Here.
Coyne.
Here.
Heffinger.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of December 10th, 2018, and the organizational meeting of January 7th, 2019, as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. Discussion on the approval of the minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to the council meeting. We're going to meet in two weeks. The Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Thank you, Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not have a meeting scheduled, but we do have an item now that's been assigned to Public Properties, so we will get a meeting scheduled soon. No other report this evening.
Thank you, special legislation. Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report, but I am going to try to schedule a meeting sometime in February. We've been working on the Equality Legislation, and as soon as I have, I guess, a more complete copy of that legislation and have an opportunity to share it with you and with the mayor and the law director, then I'll schedule a meeting, I think, in February.
Okay.
Thank you.
Streets and sidewalks committee, Mr. Heffinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report at this time, but we do have a meeting scheduled for February 5th at 5:30. We're going to be discussing the South Broadway reconstruction of the Brick Road.
Thank you. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Starcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item came up in Finance this evening, and we will be scheduling a meeting shortly.
And Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for Finance. We have an addendum to the RCA 18162 Fitness Room Project, a letter of intent. 1901 Budget Amendments. 1902 Medina Hospital/ Cleveland Clinic LST Agreement for Dispatch Services. 1903 Medina Township Agreement for Dispatch Services. 1904 Motville Township Agreement for Dispatch Services. 1905, 2019, and 2021 Water Rates. 1906 CDBG Resolving Loan Agreement. 1907, 2019 Membership Renewal to Main Street Medina. 1908 Expenditure over $15,000 for SIPCA Architects Building Department. 1909 Expenditure over $15,000 to Dubre Architectural for the Building Department. 1910 Expenditure over $15,000 for Lampier's Lawn Service for Parks and Engineering. 1911 Increased subpoena costs for Rita Delinquency Program. 1912 Fiscal Year 2018 CHIP Grant MMHA Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Agreement. 1913 Grant Application for ODNR Reagan Parkway Multipurpose Trail Extension. 1914 Expenditure over $15,000 Morrison Custom Welding for the Parks. 1915 Expenditure of $15,000 for Kristowski Tractor Sales for Sports Fields. And 1916 Petition for Detachment from the City to Lafayette Township. Public Properties has one item. 1917 Medina Parks, County Parks, Lake Medina Update and the Master Plan. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome everybody back after the holiday break and Happy New Year. So just a reminder, there's been a traffic pattern change between the UCC Church and the Common Pleas Court in the 200 block of East Liberty Street. We made the leftmost lane, which used to be left turn only, a straight through lane also to try to move traffic more efficiently through there. And signs are in place and pavement markings have been painted. We'll put the plastic down in the spring, but that seems to be helping with the congestion in that block. The only thing to keep in mind is then if you intend to go straight across Court Street, then there will have to be a merge in that next block between Broadway and Court Street. The new city website went live on Monday, January 7th, a week ago now. We're continuing to add additional materials, as well as the ability to apply and pay online for utilities permits, both Building Department and Park permits. The design and planning started in early 2017 and commenced through the end of last year. I'd like to thank former Administrative Assistant Don Conwell, my current Administrative Assistant Sherry Crowe, and Miles Reed and Jared Fry from our Medina TV office, along with our city IT Director Darren, Sergeant Darren Zaramba, for their help and expertise on this project. The advantage of this new website is that you can get to literally any area on the website with three clicks or less, and that was the goal when it was designed. It's improved user friendliness, and the upgrade was done at no cost to the city, as the rewrite was included in our original hosting price with WRIS out of Solon. I would ask if the public or the council hears of any issues with the website, if you simply contact Sherry at our office, 722-9020, or her email is scrowcrow at medinoh.org. We want to know of any problems that the public or the council or citizens may find so that we can get them corrected pretty promptly. And depending on the problem, sometimes it's something that just needs adjusted or tweaked. Sometimes it takes IT help, and sometimes it takes the web design help from WRIS, but we'll get it corrected. I wanted to share with council and the public that last week, January 7th through January 11th, Rita representatives were here all five days. Our staff agreed to park off-site to leave more spaces available for, close to the building available for the constituents. And I found the folks at Rita, their customer service model seems to match the cities very well. They're very polite, helpful, and accommodating to our constituents, and I shared that with the auditors that were here, as well as with Mark Toronto. Some of the examples, though, of accommodating the constituents I would like to share is we had an elderly person that was not able to come here to share their information, and the auditor from RIS took one of our phones without a cord on it, came down here to their laptop, and was able to get her assisted without her having to come out into the weather and drive up here. We had another young lady that was disabled with a walker and unable to navigate the sets of stairs because they were down here in the rotunda, and they simply took their computer and went back up to the top there where our cable TV is set up, and took the laptop up there, looked at all her documents, made copies of everything that she needed, and she was good to go. And then last but not least, on Friday afternoon about 2:00 PM, we had a resident that walked, literally walked, an elderly resident from Nottingham Drive, which is on Highland Drive, to City Hall to meet with the auditors. And it was relatively cold out on Friday, and she was concerned with walking back home. And the Rita folks came to find me to see if we couldn't arrange for a ride home for her, and it just so happened one of our employees was leaving a little early that day to a late, due to a late-night meeting she had the night before. Sandy Davis from our Community Development Department took the lady back up to her home in Nottingham, and that customer service is what makes Medina special. And then last but not least, I'd like to announce that the Martin Luther King Service and Celebration for the Community this year will be held at Medina Presbyterian Church. The address there is 5020 Burgundy Bay Boulevard, and it's going to be held on next Sunday, January 20th, at 4:00 PM. And the public and council and anybody interested are welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing, my usual annual reminder to residents to file income tax return with Rita, you can find them on the web at RitaOhio. We also have forms here at City Hall if you want to come up and get those. And then we have the water rates. Avon Lake has increased the rate that we're paying, so Finance voted on that earlier. We'll be talking about that and a few other things coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Director of Law.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do not have a report. Wanted to mention we have former Councilman Mark Colissar in the audience. It's great that you could make this meeting, and it's good to see you.
Thank you. Lieutenant Markham, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item to note for council and the public. Our very first ribbon cutting this year will be held on Friday, January 25th, at 4:00 in the afternoon for the Metro Health, Medina Health Center located at 111 West Reagan Parkway. I believe everybody is aware that the mayor worked with our state legislators in amending some legislation for them to bring services into the county, and this is their first facility that they're opening with the hope of a birthing unit maybe down the road somewhere. So hopefully all of you will be able to make it. I will be sending out a formal invitation sometime this week, but I think all of you have received a calendar invite. And again, these are done jointly with Main Street Medina and the Medina Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Woodley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to let the public know, I'll be hosting a public meeting this Thursday, January 17th, at 5:30 PM at City Hall Rotunda, to discuss the potential East Reagan Parkway Trail Extension from Larkens Way West to North Court Street. The Parks Department is applying for potential grant funding for the project through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Recreational Trails Program, and we're seeking public input. Interested parties are invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Building Department is working on its 2018 year-end reports. I just want to say that 2018 was an extremely record-setting year for construction, both residential and commercial.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think I need to remind people that winter has finally arrived. I do want to remind folks that we like to say we have them adjust the speed of their vehicles to the condition of the roads. The City Service Department does not staff evening hours and weekends and holidays, so we rely on call-in, and folks are with their families, maybe at dinners, and sometimes it's 45 minutes to an hour before we get on the road for a snow and ice event. So appreciate the public's patience and understanding during that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of mayoral appointments, we have one for the Economic Development Committee, Steve Christman, for a term expiring 12/31/22.
Move to confirm the mayoral appointment.
Second. Discussion on the appointment. Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the mayoral appointment?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Confirmation of President of Council appointments. This came out of the Strategic Plan Committee when we were going over the strategic plan. The strategic goals, we decided maybe we should have a council representative to monitor each of the various goals of the strategic plan. So we sent out an email, and we had some volunteers from council to give us an update. We're probably looking at quarterly or semiannually on the various goals of the issues presented by the community, the progress that we're making towards those goals, just so we keep the strategic plan top of mind when we make all our decisions based upon the city, so we make sure that we continue to go in the correct direction. And the strategic plan is the document that helps us provide that direction. So with that said, if there's no objection, I'd like to have all five basic goals and individuals be voted on at once. That's Quality of Life, Bill Lamb; Balanced Development, Bob Starcher; Economic Development, Paul Rose; Collaborative Leadership, Jim Shields; and Effective Government, Eric Heffinger.
Move to confirm the President of Council appointments.
Second. Discussion on those appointments. Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of those appointments?
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Notice of Communications and Petitions, we have one for a liquor permit, not to object to the issuance of a new C1 permit to Rivery Brews LLC Doing Businesses, Rivery Brews, 124 Lafayette Road, Suite 1.
Move not to object.
Second, not to object.
Discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
In finish business, we have none introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to come on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, Mr. Gold. Wait, one behind you. You want to go first, ma'am? You can go first, ma'am. Bruce Yule at his time.
It's not that difficult. My name is Susan O'Neil. My address is 213 Leisure Lane here in Medina. And the only thing that I had a suggestion for was, when you're coming out of Forest Meadows Drive, taking a left onto North Court, going south, the new medians are lovely. They're very hard to see when it's dark. Now, I don't know if it's aesthetics, that there's no little teeny tiny reflectors on there, but that was something I thought all we needed to do, perhaps put a little tape, a little reflector, a little paint, yellow paint or something. I don't want, you know, I don't want to try and take away from the charm that Medina's trying to create continuously, but it was just a suggestion that I was thinking would help. I see that some of those curbs have been hit. As a matter of fact, when I was coming here tonight, I checked them, and there are, you know, spots where they've been already hit. I didn't think it was anything major, probably wouldn't cost more than a few dollars at Home Depot. So that was my suggestion, and I hope it's something that can be taken into consideration. Besides that particular area, there was also, I believe it's coming out of Ledgewood, right by Malley's, which I never go to, but that was another spot there, and there's another one. Anyway, where all those little medians have come out into very, very narrow areas. It's not a biggie. Hopefully something like that can be addressed.
Thank you. I think we tried to address some of that with the striping and the turning lane, because some people with the new median, they turn too quickly.
Right.
They go right into it, and it's something to get used to. Hopefully over time, there'll be less and less of those concerns, but I guess I could understand the immediate, you know, conflicts that occur because people are used to them.
Tiny, little bit of yellow paint, just a smidge.
Yeah, Mr. Pacoli and Mr. Patton, you know, they looked at it, so hopefully that'll be corrected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bruce Gold, 407 Providence Drive. I wanted to bring to council's attention the problems that are happening with Rita and the transition from CCA. I'm going to give you an example of my daughter. She's going to school, college. She's working part-time, and she had a tax liability of $52.07. What happened was Rita contacted her and said that they were denying her the withholding tax allowance that was provided by her employer, because they did not have a copy of the W-2. Now, that was due to being lost, misplaced, or CCA not providing that, but we definitely filed the taxes, and they were done correctly. We ran into a problem. They weren't being very cooperative. So first of all, I have to thank the mayor, because if it wasn't for the mayor's involvement, I don't know if we would have been able to resolve it so easily. And by easily, that was only after the mayor got involved. Had contacted other city officials, and it wasn't taken care of, but we were able to move and finally make them realize that we had the proper documentation and that she wasn't owed the, or she did not owe the $52.07 tax liability. And the reason I bring that up is because I have to disagree with the mayor on his comments regarding the quality of service from Rita and the quality of customer care, shall we say, through that organization. I found them very, it was very disheartening. They were very, less than forthright in demanding items, less than forthright when I petitioned them to correct the problem. And I did a little investigation. I went to my CPA, and I asked her if she was seeing similar situations with other residents. And she laughed, and she told me that it was quite prevalent. It was not only with residents and individual taxes, it was also with business taxes. In fact, she laughed because her firm was written a letter stating that she hadn't filed taxes for her CPA firm, which you have to laugh at, because if they're not going to provide good service to their own tax needs, how can they provide it to the public? So you find it a little funny that some of the information, I'm sure people have not performed their duties and paid taxes, but I find that probably a very small case. Most of this has been because Rita hasn't either A, gotten the information from CCA, or they've jumped to conclusions regarding the information that residents had provided, that maybe some of the documentation had been missing, like in the case of my daughter, where they clearly told us that she was missing her W-2 withholding. They didn't have a copy, and therefore they demanded payment. The funny thing is, as we got down farther through this and we dug down, their response was, "Well, you never filed the taxes. We don't have a copy of the tax, and we don't have the W-2," which is kind of funny because they knew right down to the cent how much we owed, or my daughter owed. So we know that they had at some time achieved a copy of the taxes or the tax form. Being that it's prevalent within the city, I'm concerned because this is a hot issue for me with the taxes. I was beaten up rather severely by another government agency, a little higher up food chain than the local, with the tax issues. And I'm finding that people are having to go through and spend extra dollars to defend themselves against Rita and their claims. They have to go to their CPA, their accountant, whoever helped with the tax issue, and now they have to engage them again and pay extra funds for these individuals or these companies to be able to get the information that Rita's requesting. It's an expense and a burden on the citizens and on businesses as well. And I'm sure I'm not the only one who has called, and I'm sure that, and I know personally that some members of the administration have also had problems dealing with the tax issue and Rita's strong-arm tactics. I'd like to see this council actually rein these people in a little bit, because what they're asking for and what they're demanding are well outside the realm of normal tax collection. And I wanted to make sure that I was able to bring it to your attention, to see if that you can possibly have a discussion, because I don't find, I'm sorry, mayor, but I do not find that Rita is operating in a very customer-service oriented manner. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for letting us know what goes on, because otherwise we wouldn't know unless people like you tell us the experiences that they're having, but we appreciate your information.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Happy New Year to everybody. Hope everyone's holiday was good. Tammy Kirby, 246 West Friendship Street. I saw in one of the emails from Kathy for the last meeting, the organization meeting agenda, that each ward had an advisor, not just a councilperson, and I was wondering, I think for Ward 2, it was Alicia somebody?
Oh, no, that was...
And I was wondering what an advisor was.
I'm sorry, that was for the strategic plan. That was the member of the strategic plan. One person is appointed from each ward and the city as a whole, so that's probably where you saw that. They were just a member of the Strategic Advisory Committee.
Okay. And then how do they get appointed? How does...
It's appointed through council. We, you know, look, and they were on the committee last time. The committee meets every three years, I think. We try to get together, and they wanted to serve all again, so they were reappointed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Does anybody else? Oh, Mr. Colissar. I'm not sure. I guess you could...
Do we have time? Do we have time now?
Medina residents only.
Oh. I think I've put in my time here. I'd be kicking, Mark Colissar, 9453 Hunter's Pond Drive, Tampa, Florida, but I'd be kicking myself if I didn't come up here and say something. First of all, I wanted to welcome the new council members, Councilman Starcher and Councilman Heffinger. Bob, we've worked a long time together, and I know you're going to do a great job, and Eric, I'm counting on you, man. So represent Ward 3 well, please.
Let me know if you want to give the chair a spin again.
All right. Also, you know, six of you guys are up this year, and, you know, standing on here, I'm a little biased, but working with a lot of you for quite some time. The city of Medina has great people representing us, and you guys, all your hearts are in it, and you're looking out for the well-being of our community, and I wish you all luck, and I urge Medina residents, as a resident for almost 30-plus year, 35-plus years, you guys do a heck of a job, and though we don't always meet eye-to-eye in the past, we come together and we move forward. So good luck to each one of you, and I urge all Medina residents to support you guys in November. And I don't know if I'll have an opportunity to come up here and say that until, you know, from now until November, so that's why I'm doing it. Another thing is, I just want to publicly thank Senator Larry Obhoff. I was down in Florida a month after leaving this community. You're missing, my wife and I, we miss Medina. You know, we miss the hometown feel, and, you know, you really don't know how good you have it until you leave. And out of the blue, I get a letter of recognition from Senator Larry Obhoff thanking me for my tenure here on council, and it was just something that felt really good, that he took the time to have his office reach out to me and appreciate all the time effort put in. So thank you, Larry. And lastly, I just want to give you an update on Hillsborough County, Florida, and their trash recycling. I do have a recycling bin that I put down at the end of my curb once a week, and it's a breath of fresh air that I don't have to load the car up and go to the recycling bins around the city, so hopefully that's still in the, our talking stages at least, to maybe try to get that for Medina residents. And I know Commissioner Hudson's here, so it's a nice thing that the commissioners down in Hillsborough County were able to put something together, and maybe the city and the county can still work something out to have that for our residents. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark, and you're always welcome, always welcome back to give us your input. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have Ordinance 119, oh, our first one. An ordinance authorizing a job creation grant agreement for Ravago Americas LLC.
Move to approve?
Second. Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is for the mayor to enter into a job creation grant agreement with Ravago Americas LLC for the purpose of establishing a business located at 5192 Lake Road, creating 75 new full-time positions and roughly $2,710,166 to the city of Medina from 2019, 2020 to 2022. Ravago Americas LLC will have an investment of approximately $97,450,000 in this project. The agreement will provide Ravago Americas with a grant up to 40% of new payroll taxes to the city of Medina for five years. We are respectfully requesting approval of the job creation grant agreement. It has been reviewed and approved by our law director, as well as the company. And as a final note, a reminder to council and the public, our job creation grants are paid from non-income tax-generated revenues. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will clerk please call the roll on the approval of the ordinance.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Ordinance 1-19 passes 7-0.
Resolution 2-19, a resolution requesting the county auditor to make tax advances during the year 2019 pursuant to the Ohio Vice Code Section 32134.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have to make this request in order to get advances on the property tax collections.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Resolution 2-19 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 3-19, ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and to award a contract to the successful bidder for the West Smith Road Reconstruction Project Phase 3.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This project is Phase 3 of our West Smith Road Reconstruction. We just, last year, did East Smith Road, the first phase of that. This project will extend from where we left off at Lake Road, heading west to Commerce Drive, and include the intersection Commerce. It'll be new concrete pavement, water lines, and storm sewers.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Ordinance 3-19 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 4-19, ordinance amending Section 3107 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio relative to the Sanitation Department, and approving the revised job descriptions of the sanitation superintendent and foreman.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. Job tasks have changed over the years, specifically in the positions of superintendent and foreman in the sanitation department. This ordinance reflects the changes as approved by our law director as well as Civil Service Commission in December. Some of the changes to note are computer and communications-related, as well as equipment and operations knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 4-19 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 5-19, ordinance authorizing the increase of the expenditure to Walter and Haverfield to $40,000 for the Law Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause been requested. I move to add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is regarding expenditures in 2018. That's why we're amending a 2018 purchase order, and that's why the emergency clause is requested.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 5-19 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 6-19, ordinance authorizing the purchase of one 2019 Ford F-250 Supercab truck with a snowplow from Montrose Ford to be used by the Parks Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This purchase was identified in our 2019 budget cycle, and this vehicle is going to be replacing a 2008 GMC with approximately 83,000 miles that served our department well. This is being purchased under the Community University and Education Purchasing Association Contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 6-19 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 7-19, ordinance amending Sections 3102B12 and 3105 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio relative to the Law Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause been requested. I move to add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the ordinance and emergency clause. Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Law Department's full-time secretary, Kim Walters, is retiring after a little over 30 years of service. In order to help with some of the administrative burden, I've asked the council to add an additional part-time clerk secretary position. The emergency clause has been requested, as some of these burdens will come to bear at the end of this month, which is only two weeks away. And I thank the council for its consideration.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.